It is the belief of this council that working as one Prince George's County, we can build on the incremental successes of our system and enhance our ability to provide the best education possible for each and every child in our county. On behalf of my colleagues, I want to thank County Executive Baker for his unwavering commitment to this unique opportunity to collaborate on behalf of our young people here in Prince George's County. I also want to offer a special thanks to my colleagues and our legislative branch staff who have worked so diligently throughout this process as we carefully consider applications. After reaching consensus on the application process, the county executive submitted more than 90 applications to the council from citizens eager to become involved in our school system. We appreciate the names that emerged and applaud each and every citizen who submitted an application. We strongly encourage your continued involvement in our school system. Our children need you, and we need your participation to succeed in serving them. This council is confident that Mr. Curtis Valentine, the parent representative we are appointing, will be a strong advocate for our children, an asset to the Board of Education, and work well with all education stakeholders. We thank you for your willingness to serve and congratulate you on your appointment. We look forward to the continued cooperative working relationship as the Board of Education transitions to its new form and purpose under state law with a unified goal of enhancing our education system and meeting the needs of all of our students. Thank you. At this point, I would like to invite the clerk of the council, clerk of the court, to please come forward, and I invite Mr. Valentine as well. You sure you're ready?
Yes.
Okay. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your full name.
I, Curtis Chavis Valentine.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the State of Maryland.
To the State of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will support the Charter.
And I will support the Charter.
And laws.
And laws.
Of Prince George's County.
Of Prince George's County.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Member Board of Education.
Execute the office of Member Board of Education.
For Prince George's County.
For Prince George's County.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
And the Charter and laws.
And the Charter and laws.
Of Prince George's County.
Of Prince George's County.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Let me also welcome you for this very special occasion, and let me just say that it is an honor to support the appointment of Mr. Valentine, an eight district resident who lives in Fort Washington, Maryland, Prince George's County. I truly believe this is a great day for Prince George's County school system to have a caliber person such as Mr. Valentine, who is a graduate of Morehouse Harvard University. He brings national and international experience to the school board and also have experience at Oxon Hill Middle School as a language art instructor. So we are excited about this appointment, and we know that Mr. Valentine will work hard on behalf of all the children in Prince George's County to make sure that they can fully reach their potential and that he will bring good accountability finances to our Prince George's County system. We thank you, Mr. Valentine, and congratulations.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman Harrison, Vice Chairman Patterson Patterson, and for the board for selecting me. I want to thank my wife, Daria, and my two children for being here this morning. This is a great honor for me and my family, but inasmuch as it's an honor for me, this is not about me. This is not about, the campaign for education in our county can't be about Curtis Valentine, can't be about Sagoon Eubanks, or even Richard Baker. It has to be about the parents and the children, the over 130,000 students who go to school every day, who wake up every morning trusting that the school system will prepare their children for the future. It's also about the thousands of parents who have left the school system. It's important that we've continued to create a system that brings trust back to them, that they will truly become a part of this process. Again, we can't do it alone. We need everyone on board. I'm glad to be a member of this body and to participate in this process. We will make it happen. I am hopeful. I am invested in this. I have two children who are at the beginnings of the system. They will be in the system for a very, very long time. This is very personal to me, but I understand we have to do it together. I look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
I have the pleasure, Madam Chair and members of the council, to put forth two names to be sworn in. As was said about Mr. Valentine, it was a lengthy process. There were a number of applications. We were surprised, shocked, and amazed and pleased with the number of people who applied. Two individuals stand out. Dr. Dan Kaufman, who has a three-month?
Three weeks.
Three-week-old baby, who's here in attendance today, he and his wife, and Dr. Beverly Anderson and her family are here, will be tremendous assets to this board and our county. Each of them brings a level of knowledge, experience, that will help to make our schools better. They both have a level of commitment to public education in our children. They both understand the importance of ensuring that the best talent possible will be in our classrooms, our buildings. They know that we must recruit and retain good teachers and administrators. They are aware of the best practices around the country to teach and support our young people, and they know that it is vitally important that we listen to and engage the community, not just outside of our school buildings, but inside them as well. The process we used to find these candidates helped us reveal the tremendous level of talent that we have here in Prince George's County. We have some really great candidates with diverse and relevant backgrounds that applied. At this point, I want to thank Mr. Jim Eastep and his team that went through those applications and whittled them down for us. If we can give Jim a round of applause and his team. That team that he put together that looked through the application was committed to the process, and I want to thank each and every one of them for the role that they played. Folks who are concerned and committed to making Prince George's County the best it can be. The people standing here today represent the highest caliber, who will be standing here in a few minutes, represent the highest caliber of citizens who are committed to our community. Today, we add two more individuals to the board with diverse background in higher education business. I'm going to call them up one at a time, but before I do, I want to thank our new board chair, Sagoon Eubanks, for getting in there, you know, getting in the mix right away, and hopefully the board members have gotten to know you, you've gotten to know them. I know you said it was an easy transition, as I promised you it would be, but if we can give Sagoon, we're going to hear from him later on, a round of applause. The first one I would like to call up is Dr. Dan Kaufman, who is bilingual, who is bilingual, was a spokesperson for elementary and secondary education, state and local budget issues, higher education access, affordable and Hispanic education issues, served on NEA's National ESEA Advisory Board, which I guess is what I just read. And, you know, was just, you know, in a field of applications and applicants, you're probably one of the few people that came in for an interview that I didn't know and had never met. And I think the panel, as we interviewed, was just blown away. We'd actually thought we made a selection, and then he came in and he was just tremendous. So this time, I'd like to call up and Mr. Dr. Dan Kaufman and have our clerk of the court, Marilyn Bland. I want to thank you for being so gracious with us in this process and being willing to give up your time and your commitment, and it's just great that we have in Prince George's County someone who not only is a clerk of the court, but served in this body that we're in today, on the council, but also served on the school board, and so we're blessed. If you'd like to bring up your family, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you ready? Okay. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your full name.
I, Daniel Kaufman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the State of Maryland.
To the State of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will support the Charter.
And I will support the Charter.
And laws of Prince George's County.
And laws of Prince George's County.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Member Board of Education.
Execute the office of Member Board of Education.
For Prince George's County.
For Prince George's County.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
And the Charter and laws.
And the Charter and laws.
Of Prince George's County.
Of Prince George's County.
Congratulations.
And now we'll hear from Dr. Daniel Kaufman.
Thank you.
Our new board member.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you to County Executive Baker and his staff and to the county council with us here today. I also want to thank my wife, Tamar, as well as my daughter, my older daughter, Isadora, who's in Kenneworth Elementary, going to the second grade, who could not be here today because she's in summer camp. And I want to thank them for giving me the opportunity to actually serve in this role, given that I have a three-week-old younger daughter, which obviously is quite stressful and situation to be in. So the timing could be better, but I'm really, really excited about this opportunity. And I just want to say a few words about the board and the role and what we're all trying to accomplish. I've been, you know, fortunate to have experiences, a variety of experiences in the education area at the national, state, and local level, but I'm really looking forward to collaborating with the rest of the board, both the existing members as well as my new colleagues, and to talk about how we can move our entire school system forward throughout the county to make sure that every child, wherever you live, no matter what your background is, has the opportunity for a truly high-quality education, and that we can make our school system not just one of the best school systems in the state, but actually make our school system globally competitive. We live in a 21st century economy. The competition that we have is now with countries, not just within our state or within our county, and so we have to make sure that our children are fully equipped to have the knowledge and skills and abilities that they need to be successful, and we all will benefit from that. I believe there are some, hopefully, some experiences and ideas and insights that I can contribute, but I also look very much forward to talking with each and every one of my colleagues on the board, as well as with educators across the state, be they principals, teachers, school staff, parents, other members of the community, and to hear about what's going on in their communities, to hear about their ideas and insights, their experience and background, because I think there's so much that I can learn, and I go in very much with an open mind, but with a willingness and a spirit of collaboration that we can all work together and move forward to create that school system that's truly globally competitive in the 21st century and that provides all of our children with the same opportunities, support, and resources that they need. So thanks again for this great privilege to serve the county and to serve all of our children and families throughout the county. Muchas gracias por la gran oportunidad de servir el Condado de Prince George's y servir todos los estudiantes y familias aquí a través de todo el Condado. Gracias. Thank you.
And now it is my pleasure to bring up to the podium Dr. Beverly Anderson. I have known Beverly Anderson, Dr. Anderson, for a number of years, and her family and the contributions to Prince George's County are rich and diverse. We indeed were shocked and honored that she would submit her name forward. I had to check twice. I think I called your family members to make sure no one had threatened you to put your name there, but, you know, as we were reading through, and there's a lot that I know about Dr. Anderson, but I did not know her background in mathematics. I became impressed and scared at the same time. But I think being willing to, given all that you've done in Prince George's County, being willing to come here and to serve on the board and to bring your rich, vast knowledge will only help to move Prince George's County forward, and we're just so delighted and happy to have you as one of our new board members. And now I will turn it over to our clerk of the court. Please bring your family.
Yeah, I don't even have to ask Dr. Anderson. I know she's ready. She's like, "Come on."
Mike, you want to give us some direction here? Are we good?
Doing great, sir.
We're good?
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your full name.
I, Beverly Jacque Anderson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the State of Maryland.
To the State of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will support the Charter.
I will support the Charter.
And laws.
And laws.
Of Prince George's County.
Of Prince George's County.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skills and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Member Board of Education.
Execute the office of Member Board of Education.
For Prince George's County.
For Prince George's County.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
And the Charter and laws.
And the Charter and laws.
Of Prince George's County.
Of Prince George's County.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I also want to thank in advance the members of the board for accepting me as one of you, and together we will work diligently to give to the residents of Prince George's County what they rightfully deserve, an excellent public school system. I will bring lessons learned from all of my experiences to the task, and I know we will reach the goal, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you.
Before we, the chair and I believe we're going to take questions, before we do that, I'd like to call up the board chair, Sagoon Eubanks, to say a few words and to welcome us colleagues. Dr. Sagoon Eubanks. And we're pleased to have in the audience, Dr. Eubanks' wife, Dr. Sherrell Eubanks. We can give her a round of applause.
Good afternoon, colleagues. Again, it is indeed a great day for Prince George's County. It's been my honor and pleasure to be involved in a tremendously steep learning curve over the past few weeks as I've become acclimated to this position, and I welcome my new colleagues to the board, Dr. Kaufman, Dr. Anderson, and Mr. Valentine. They will indeed be tremendous attributes to the work we're doing. They are indeed impressive individuals, and make no mistake about it, however, they also will be joining nine equally impressive individuals that I've had the pleasure to work with and get to know over the past couple of weeks. Several of my board colleagues are with me here today. Board member Carolyn Boston, Carletta Fellows, Donna Hathaway Beck, and Amber Waller. Please do give them a round of applause. These board members, along with Regina Jacobs, Patricia Eubanks, Zabrina Epps, Peggy Wiggins, and Ed Burrows, have made a tremendous contribution to the students and families of Prince George's County. Their commitment, their willingness and kindness in bringing me into the group, and I'm sure welcoming our new members, has been just a breath of fresh air for me. And I should say, the couple of weeks that I've spent meeting with everyone from top cabinet officials and our acting superintendent and my labor partners have just filled me with confidence that we have such talented and committed professionals working in our schools and our school districts every day, and we believe if we put the right system in place and the right team in place to lead their efforts, give them what they need and get out of their way, then they're going to do great things for the children of Prince George's County. I look forward to this journey, and thank you for joining us.
With that, if there are any questions, again, you want to join us? If there are any questions, we'll take brief questions and...
Hi, Dr. Eubanks and today of newly sworn members moving onto a high-grade board elected and appointed. I know today everybody was talking about it's not about us, it's about our kids. What would you say to the classroom teachers who are saying, "What are we getting into here? What are we going to do at next hall?"
What I would say is that this new governance structure, again, Mr. Valentine didn't say it better. It's not about me, it's not about the individuals here, it's about how we create systems to support good teaching and learning in classrooms. The action in Prince George's County is in the classrooms. We need to give our teachers the support that they need, the professional development they need, the compensation they need. We need to compete with our neighboring school districts for the working conditions and growth opportunities that our teachers need to be successful. I know I'm deeply committed to that. I've learned very quickly that the board members who are there are deeply committed to that, and I'm sure my new colleagues are as well. So I would say to our teachers who are in the classroom now, we welcome you as colleagues. We want to listen to you and work with you to make Prince George's County the great school system that it is on the way to becoming.
I'm just going to add that that's an assumption, and that very well may that be the fact. So, next question. Okay. Oh, there's one in... I'm sorry.
Given that, I understand there were over 160 applications received, can you tell me what it was about these three candidates that, I guess, stood out in your minds over the 100-plus other candidates? Do you want to go first?
I'll let you go first.
Well, let me just tell you a little bit about the council process. First of all, you know that we used one application form, so we all used the same application, so it was the same criteria. And for those who had checked the box "parent," we received those applications. The council had a committee made up of members of the legislative branch from various backgrounds to look at those applications. They weeded through those applications and came down to, we asked them to give us 10. And from that 10, we looked at the top five, and we brought in, the first round, we brought in, I guess we, probably about a total of seven, it was seven, wasn't it? Seven candidates to interview. For us, Mr. Valentine stood out, first of all, because of his background. We believe that he understands the policies as it relates to what a board member should be doing, or what the board should be doing, not a board member, but the role of the board. He has an education background, and then he met the criteria of having children in the school system, and he's going to be there for a long time because he's got little teeny babies. So he's going to be there, so he's well-invested in the county. He's a former educator in the county. He's got a wonderful background, and I'm sure that if you want that, you can get that, his background, but he stood out amongst the others, although every candidate that we interviewed, we were very impressed with.
Yeah, I can say the same. I mean, I think, first of all, Dr. Kaufman and Curtis will get to know each other because they'll be in the school system for longer than a lot of us, but certainly everyone that submitted an application, I know for Jim and his group, it was hard to whittle those down to the folks that we finally interviewed. I did, for the final two selections, we interviewed eight people that were all very impressive and any of which would add to the talent we currently had to add to the board. I think for us, and I'll speak about Dr. Kaufman, what really surprised and blew us away was, one, with the interview that he came in, his vast knowledge of education policies, and the fact that he had great ideas coming out, and we asked him some very difficult questions, and he answered them. We certainly liked the fact that he had a child in our school, he has a child in our school system, that he was committed to this area, and that he was someone who could actually take his talent anywhere, and certainly has a very difficult job right now, but was willing to give to Prince George's County. But he just really stood out among some really talented people. Dr. Anderson, I think for us, was a consensus candidate. Everyone, you know, knew of her work and the contributions she had made to Prince George's County, and the fact that she was willing to come here and commit to helping our school system and wanting to do it, I mean, with energy and vigor. Once again, we asked difficult questions, and she was just very impressive. Sagoon really had very little choice. He was probably the one that was drafted. We certainly wanted somebody who could, was a collaborator, could bring people together, and I knew that from firsthand experience, someone who spent his life in education and teacher quality and working, but I knew could reach out to all sectors and bring them together. I mean, I couldn't think of a better person in this climate and the things that we're going to do and the challenges and opportunities that we have before us in Prince George's County, who I could ask to come into and to lead this effort that I have all the confidence in the world in. And I think once you see them working with their colleagues who are currently on there, you're going to see that Prince George's County is exactly what we've always said it is. It's a great school system. It is our job to make it even greater. You know, I've put my children through this school system. Dr. Eubanks has his children in the school system right now, so like Dr. Kaufman and like Curtis, like Mr. Valentine, so they're committed. It's nothing like having that system, as the chair and I can both attest to, our babies graduated last year, and we are quite happy. But certainly, we wanted to make, there's nothing like having the system right there in front of you to make you figure out each day how you make it better. So we're very pleased. With that, I'll let you close off.
If I could just add one other thing. Mr. Kaufman also made it to our list, and he didn't make the interview, but he made it to our list that we were actually reviewing, and so we're very happy to see that he made it, because I argued for you, just so you know. And the beautiful thing, the beautiful thing about this is that while some of us knew some of the applicants, most of us didn't know all of the applicants, and so those, and I can say that I didn't know hardly any of them, so I'm very happy that the selections that were made actually occurred in the appointments, and out of the three new appointments, four new appointments, at least three of them have children in the school system, and I think that that's a wonderful, a wonderful thing, and so I would thank you all once again for your willingness to serve.
Let me add, since we're being, full disclosure, we knew Curtis Valentine, and we actually wanted him on our list. And so we were very pleased, Curtis, that you, I want you to know, many of us advocated for you to be on our list, and we're so glad that the collaboration of thinking is the same. With that, we feel really good about the movement with the new members, with their colleagues, to move the school system forward. I want to thank you for coming out today and... In fact, since I am in the Chair's house, I will let her close it out. Madam Chair.
Well, just in closing, I don't have a whole lot of words. I just want to thank you all for coming out to support each and every one of these new appointees, but more importantly, thank you so much for your support of the students in Prince George's County schools and our teachers and administrators, all of the people who work in the school system. We can't forget those. They work hard every day. Many of them are high school and middle school teachers and administrators, and that's a whole lot when you have all of those young people gathered in one place for six to eight hours a day. So I thank you and want to recognize, we have Mr. Lou Robinson, who represents the teachers, Ms. Doris Reed, who represents the administrators, Mr. Sunny Reed, who represents just about everybody else in the school system, and so, and then our Board Members who are here, we thank you so much for coming out and giving your support that way. And so for everyone else, thank you for coming, and we look forward to growing a great school system with wonderful children.